This is Fayetteville, we build buildings over the line.
This is Fayetteville, we build buildings over the line.
You know, sometimes we'll have a, um, a, a page between the corner that you don't know about.
A mound one corner.
Did you? Did they have a, a rock or something like that?
Yeah.
If you go to Walmart and get a, um, um, metal detector and go scratch stuff.
You get all kinds of ideas.
Well, that's how I found mine. I'm just telling you. It's terrible. It just didn't work. I still have some I've been looking for.
You did.
It's right.
No city attorney?
There's nobody here.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Let's do it.
You ready?
We have a form.
We have a form.
We don't, yes. Do we need, is there anything that we need more people for? I mean, the conditional use permit has to be, um, uh, um, unanimous.
You guys ready? Andrew?
Mario? You might remind everybody that, uh, conditional use permits in rezonings have to have five positive votes.
Andrew, if I don't, please step in.
Okay.
You guys too, it takes a village. Takes a village.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the June twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Fayetteville Planning Commission. Um, I'd like to remind commissioners and members of the public to please turn off your cellphones or put them on silent so as not to disturb the proceedings. Also, if anyone is in need of a, a listening device, hearing device, please talk, talk to staff. They can, uh, they can pull one up pretty quickly. Uh, Mr. Garner, will you call the roll?
Cook?
Here.
Chester?
Here.
Honchul?
Here.
Hoskins? Candy? Ernest? Winston?
Here.
Cave?
Here.
Bunch?
Here.
Heading right into our agenda, we have three items on consent. We have the minutes from the June thirteenth meeting. We have administrative item one-one dash three-eight-seven-two for six, sixty-eight fifty-five West Weddington. And we have vacation request one-one dash three-eight-six-one for fifteen twenty-eight North Garland, Garland Townhomes. Is there any member of the commission or the public that would like one of these items removed for discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Winston.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Winston, a second by Commissioner Chester. Mr. Garner, will you call the roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Cave?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our first item of new business is conditional use permit one-one dash three-eight-five-eight for four ninety-five West Dixon Street. We have the staff report, please.
Yes, uh, the Fayetteville Unified Development Code permits sidewalk vendors, uh, on public sidewalks in certain locations with wider sidewalks that can accommodate both pedestrians, uh, and sidewalk vendors. Those two locations are the north and west sides in front of the Walton Arts Center and the downtown Fayetteville Square. U D C also specifies a maximum limitation on the size of those, uh, sidewalk vendor carts to six feet by three feet and then five feet tall. Um, but it also allows for alternate locations outside of those two specified areas as well as, um, increasing the size for the sidewalk vendors, uh, pending Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit. So the applicant has submitted a, a request for a conditional use permit to allow for, um, a cart that's larger than permitted by right. The applicant is proposing a cart that is three feet and four inches by six feet and three inches as indicated in the diagram included in your staff reports. This alternative sized cart is proposed, uh, on the north sidewalk in front of the Walton Arts Center along Dixon Street. Staff is recommending approval of the request with four conditions of approval, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanders. Is the applicant present tonight? Please come forward and, uh, we have something a little new tonight. Identify yourself and then please put your name on the sign-in sheet. And then, just tell us about your project.
Um, my name's Roger May. Um, our cart's company called Hogs Top Dogs. I'm twenty years old and I'm trying to start a new business. I hope you all accept my, uh, enlargement of the cart.
Uh, that's good enough. Did you put your name on the sheet? Fantastic. We'll get back to you with any questions. Is there anyone from the public here to speak to conditional use permit one-one dash three-eight-five-eight? Seeing none, pull it back to the commission for... Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Chester?
My only comment is, Derek, you had said that, um, staff was considering maybe standardizing a slightly larger, or maybe it was Andrew, slightly larger cart size. Where are we on that?
Yes, we, we have looked at potentially changing the ordinance to increase the size of some of these carts. We, it was a relatively new ordinance two years ago. And we've had a few of these carts and we've had several of them before the commission with some slight variances to have the carts a little bit bigger. And so we are looking at changing that this year potentially. Um, we're doing some research to increase the size of the carts. We haven't have anything drafted yet, but it's, um, hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll have something before the commission.
Okay. Thanks. Unless anybody else has anything else? If I may?
You may.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approves CUP eleven dash three-eight-five-eight with, uh, staff recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion for approval by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Winston. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Garner, will you call the roll?
Cook? Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Cave?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our agenda is conditional use permit one-one dash three-eight-five-nine for nineteen thirty-two Garland Youth Bridge. Can we have the staff report, please?
Evening, Commissioner. This request is for, uh, just over three and a half acres of property owned by the City of Fayetteville. This is just north of Cato Springs and east of Garland, uh, of that intersection. Property's actually been used for non-residential facilities for several decades. Uh, there's two buildings, each with separate parking lots on this property. The northern building houses a Head Start School and that's been in operation since about nineteen eighty-two. The southern building, uh, which is, um, requested to be used by Youth Bridge, uh, has been used as a women's shelter since nineteen eighty-six up until about two thousand and seven when they built a new facility in North Fayetteville. Uh, the Youth Bridge, uh, services that they'd be providing here is for area youth ages sixteen to twenty-three. And they'd have living facilities for up to twenty-six youth. And then, of course, they had administrative offices for about six to twelve staff members depending on the number of, uh, youth that they have in the facility. Uh, given the fact that the property's been used since the early eighties for non-residential uses, really catering towards community uses and educational facilities, we think it's a completely appropriate use, uh, for Youth, Youth Bridge. Especially provided the resource that they'll be giving to area youth in education and life skills. So, staff is recommending approval of this request. We do have three conditions of approval. I did mention in the agenda session, condition number two regarding the sprinkler system requirement is a little unique. We do have a letter in there from Youth Bridge stating their understanding that, uh, a sprinkler system will be required because of the change in occupancy and that requirement under the fire code. Beyond that, we can answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fulter. Is the applicant present tonight? Please come forward and tell us about your project. And like the previous, state your name for the record and fill out the form. Perfect.
Um, my name's Kathy Lot and, um, I propose to name Youth Bridge Incorporated. And I'm just here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Fair enough. If we have any, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone from the public present to speak to conditional use permit one-one dash three-eight-five-nine?
My name is Judy Spurlock and I live in that neighborhood. Uh, the letter we got is kind of confusing to me. It says that there's four units per acre and that there could be four units put back there, so we were confused about that.
Okay, um, is that the extent of your comments? We'll, we'll get some clarification for you when it, when it comes back to, uh, when it's public, when it's, uh, commission question-answer time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the commission. I'll dive in. Um, Mr. Fulter, do you think you could offer some clarification for, uh, Ms. Spurlock's question?
Yeah, uh, I'd ask that she maybe hand me up that document. I think it's the, uh, letter sent out by the applicant describing the nature of the project.
Is that zoning section there?
Yes, it says four units per acre and there's like three more.
Exactly. Uh, in the letter that you send out to surrounding property owners, you're required to state the zoning of the property. Of course, it's the reason this is coming forward as conditional use because the southern half of the property is zoned residential, single-family, four units per acre, which is a fairly basic residential zoning classification in the city. And so it's really just a statement of zoning. So, um, this project is just for Youth Bridge to utilize the existing building. It's not for any new facilities, new buildings, new houses, or anything associated with this.
Fantastic. Thank you much.
Okay, so how many children are we talking, are we talking about? Children that are like, neither place for just a short time, or is it like children that have been in trouble and will be there for a while?
I'd have the applicant maybe, uh, come up and kind of describe the program a little bit more in detail. There's a, uh, as I said, a, a good letter and description of the services in the staff report, but I think a member of Youth Bridge might be able to answer that better.
Sure, if you would.
Sure.
Uh, Youth Bridge serves a variety of children. Um, what we propose to use this facility for is, um, kids who are sixteen to twenty-three, who are finding themselves homeless, um, have been kicked out of their homes, are staying with friends, things like that. And as they turn eighteen, are not able to care, um, have money to take care of themselves, pay for apartments and things like that. So that's primarily what we're u- looking at using this facility for. The referrals could come from anywhere. Um, we get referrals from the Department of Human Services. We get them from school districts. We get self-referrals. We get parents who just drop kids off. Um, we do get referrals from juvenile court. Um, it, it's just a wide variety. Um, we do background checks on all the adults that stay in our facility. Um, that doesn't mean that they, um, we won't take somebody that has a criminal record. We do, but we do the background checks to, to be aware that there's no violent crimes that, um, because we wouldn't want that in our facility. Um, there's supervision twenty-four hours a day. There's a camera system that will be installed as well. Any other questions I can answer?
The potential capacity, I seem, I remember a couple dozen maybe from the staff report?
Up to twenty-six.
Up to twenty-six?
Is what we were looking at.
Okay. I think that's it. Did, Ms. Spurlock, did we address?
Well, I, I, you know, we're going to be over units there and there's going to be lots of...
No additional development. It will all be in the existing structure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, um, public comment to conditional use permit one-one dash three-eight-five-nine? Oh, I'm sorry, we're, we're already back at the commission, aren't we? I got caught up in the moment. Sorry, guys. Additional comments, questions? For motions?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Chester?
There are no other comments. I would like to move that we approve CUP one-one dash three-eight-five-nine for Youth Bridge with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Winston. Is there any further comment or discussion? Mr. Garner, will you call the roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Honchul?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Cave?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on our agenda is rezoning request one-one dash three-eight-five-seven for five-ten West Eleventh, nine-eight-nine South School, the sale barn. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes, this property is located just south of Martin Luther King Boulevard, and it was developed in approximately nineteen fifty for the Washington County Sale Barn. Uh, the twelve-acre project boundary has frontage onto several streets. That's South School Avenue, Eleventh Street, Dunn Avenue, National, National Street, and Government Avenue. And it includes several lots, um, that are encompassed by three different zoning districts. That would be the I-one, heavy, commercial and light industrial, the RMF twenty-four, which is residential multifamily, twenty-four dwelling units per acre. And the DG Downtown General Zoning District, which was a part of the, uh, Walker Park Master Plan rezoning a few years back. In May of two thousand and nine, the property owner submitted a rezoning request, uh, for approximately eight point eight-seven acres of the subject property. That excluded the property, um, now included in the, in the project boundary that fronts onto South School Avenue as well as two large parcels adjacent to Government Avenue. The applicant's request at that time was to rezone the property from I-one to RMF twenty-four. Staff was, uh, not supportive of that rezoning request primarily because the request was to rezone the property to, uh, a single use, um, which would be multifamily exclusively for the land. Um, but the applicant did work with staff and, um, to find a, a zoning district that would be more, uh, in keeping with city plan's goals and development, uh, with a traditional town form, uh, with low intensity and compatible land uses in the area. The applicant revised the application to rezone the property to Downtown General. Um, after much discussion and public comment, uh, primarily related to the adjacent national cemeteries' plans for expansion in the future, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the applicant's rezoning request. However, the city council voted three, four, uh, and one, and did not approve the rezoning request. The applicant has come back to the planning division with a revised rezoning application for the original property plus those two tracks that I discussed earlier. Um, and proposes to rezone the property from I-one, RMF twenty-four, and DG to CS Community Services. This new, um, application, uh, would provide future redevelopment of the property with access onto South School. The underlying RMF twenty-four and Downtown General, uh, zoning districts that encompass part of the, the property, um, under consideration are consistent with city plans, um, with the city's, uh, land use planning objectives within city plan twenty-twenty-five. Both are designated as form-based zoning districts that require traditional town form with a build-two zone. The Downtown General District allows for a mixture of uses, um, residential and non-residential. But the RMF twenty-four zoning district still is designed to accommodate primarily, uh, residential uses. The current I-one district, which regulates the majority of the subject property, is not consistent with the city's planning policies or the future land use designation of city neighborhood area in this, in this location. The permitted uses in the I-one zoning district are not compatible with the surrounding residential, uh, commercial, office uses. Um, those use, those uses within, that are permitted within the I-one zoning district include warehousing, wholesaling, um, manufacturing, and bulk petroleum storage facilities. These types of facilities typically, um, produce a lot of large truck traffic which, um, and, and are associated with, uh, uses that produce noise, noxious odors, vibrations, dust, other, other nuisances. Uh, that could be detrimental to the adjoining residences and, uh, uh, other properties. Uh, staff, um, feels that the development pattern of the Community Services Zoning District is consistent with and complementary to the existing community character of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, particularly, particularly in an area that is transitioning from the commercial uses along South School to the east to the residential uses, uh, within that neighborhood to the west. Further, staff, uh, finds that the Community Services Zoning District incorporates both non-residential design standards and the urban residential design standards, which regulate building mass, scale, uh, and design, and requires some more pedestrian-oriented elements. Um, staff does find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with city plan twenty-twenty-five and recommends forwarding the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanders. Is the applicant present?
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Justin Eichman. Uh, I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Billy Joe Bartholomew and the Bartholomew family. Uh, I'm a, I'm a Fayetteville resident, uh, and they've asked me to, to, to speak tonight. I've been, I've been helping them out on this matter. Um, the, the sale barn property is owned by, uh, by Billy Joe Bartholomew, who's here behind me. Uh, the one-acre tract sort of on, on South School, uh, is owned by Billy Joe and his siblings. Um, and so, uh, this is a combined, uh, combined request. And, uh, the staff report is very, very thorough. I don't want to sit up here and, and simply recite stuff that, that's already, uh, in that report. Um, I, I thought what I'd do is just point out a couple of things and then answer any questions that, uh, that y'all might have. Um, the, uh, this has been, uh, in the Bartholomew family for, uh, close to seventy years. Uh, I think Billy Joe told me that five generations of Bartholomew's have operated a sale barn, um, on this property. I think everybody's familiar with, uh, uh, the rezoning effort two years ago, uh, where it went up to council and there was, there was certainly, um, a, a lot of comment and over a long period of time, uh, discussion, uh, about this, about this rezoning. And what we wanted to do this time was not simply, uh, come back with the exact same proposal, uh, but to try to, in the best way we could, address concerns that were raised, uh, two years ago. Um, and before you, uh, you know, with the, one of the big differences in my mind is the one-acre tract, uh, that borders South School. Uh, that property right there currently, um, I mean, if you look at it, it looks kind of like a used car lot, and I think it was in the past. Uh, that was a, a use, uh, a number of years ago. Now, it's, uh, I believe has a, has an insurance salesman, uh, there. But, uh, but it's adjacent to the larger, what everybody refers to as the, uh, as the sale barn property. And two years ago, one of the comments that was brought up at city council was a traffic concern. Um, and, uh, I, I think it was a, a legitimate point that was raised is without that, without that school, South School access, is that traffic the naturally funnel up Dunn National Government Street? And, uh, there was concern there that, uh, that that, you know, that, of having that sort of be the natural feeder, uh, for the development. And so, uh, with this, uh, application, of course, we have, uh, the, uh, school frontage and the attention is, is for that to be sort of the, the, the entrance and the, uh, the major thoroughfare there through the, uh, to the development. Um, and of course, uh, last time, uh, the zoning district that was proposed was, uh, Downtown General. This time, um, uh, we were asking for Community Services, uh, after, uh, several meetings with, uh, with staff. And, uh, you know, that was certainly done in the effort as, you know, trying to, uh, listen to and adhere to, uh, the city's plan and, uh, you know, the, uh, the, the, the direction that the city wants to go, uh, certainly in this area. So, uh, I think, uh, those were the, uh, the issues that I wanted to, uh, that I wanted to bring up. You know, we, we hope that, uh, that you all were, will, uh, consider this request and thank you for it. Um, I believe it is a, uh, certainly a compatible, uh, request. It's consistent with the, with the city plans. And if there's any questions that we can answer, I'd be happy to. And Billy Joe will be happy to come up and answer any questions that you may have. If there's anybody here who, uh, in the audience who has any questions, I'll be happy to address those as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eichman. We'll get back to you if we, if we do in fact have any questions. Is there any member of the public here to speak to rezoning request one-one dash three-eight-five-seven? Please come forward, state your name, sign in, and let us hear it.
My name is Kathy Casida. Um, I live on Southwest Avenue, so I'm about less than a block from the proposed zoning change. I feel that this zoning change will drastically affect our neighborhood. This is a neighborhood, yes, it is zoned RM twenty-four, but it's mostly single-family residents and mostly owner-occupied. Um, I feel that it would be more compatible to have a conditional zone zoning such as neighborhood conservation or even neighborhood services. That way compatibility issues can be addressed to have a smooth transition and appropriate housing choices rather than allowed by right, large apartment complexes. Um, Community Services, uh, is, how would you put it? Non-conditional use. They, is that, is that how it's stated? So it's allowed by right to build gas stations and large apartment complexes. It allows four-story buildings with no density restrictions and only a fifteen-foot setback. I could be a little bit off on stuff. I didn't have a lot of time to do research. Um, I believe this will cause more traffic congestion. I know that it's proposed maybe to use this other property onto South School for exit. And then there's also, uh, is that Government Avenue, both of which mean a left turn onto, to get to maybe, uh, the university or any shopping areas, I-five-forty. I live on West Avenue. The most convenient way to get to those areas is for me to just go one more block to fifteenth, which means I believe that there will be a lot more traffic onto Southwest Avenue caused by this. The, um, Neighborhood Services or Neighborhood Conservation, I believe, is, um, three-story limit and maybe ten units per acre. And I think this would be more compatible for our neighborhood. It is a neighborhood, and I really strongly urge you to consider some other options, um, for our neighborhood. I think that's it. I think that the Neighborhood Conservation also in the savages, it would still be consistent with the city plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Casida. Is there any other member of the public here to speak to this item?
I'm Aubrey Shepherd, and I do have on YouTube, uh, at least three or four, I believe, meetings related to this from the past or any of you, or anyone who wants to look at some of the historical comments. And some I'd say hysterical comments, uh, the last time this rezoning came up. But, um, I, of course, am a member of the neighborhood. I'm a Coast Guard Reserve veteran from the Vietnam era. And I very much vouch for National Cemetery, and I'm a member of the Regional National Cemetery Improvement Corporation. I think watershed issues are a critical matter here that I'd like you to want to be aware of. The property line, as it's delineated up here, seems to come, I, I can't tell for sure. It looks like part of the way the, uh, tanglewood branch is outside this property. I know that it definitely goes down very near it, uh, probably to the flood plain. And the, in the, if you draw a triangle, and, and the branch also comes through this property at the lower end, it looks like, before it heads out toward Leventhal or toward school. Anywhere, uh, yes, school. But if you drew a, a triangle up there with that... But if you drew a triangle up there with that part that goes up like this and comes down straight, that is wetland, or it was. Historically, it has been wetland. It's been pasture. And I'm not a person who ever said that the sale barn should be closed. I understand a few people historically may not have liked the sale barn. I was proud it was there when I moved into the neighborhood, and it was actually more compatible with the historical cemetery, the National Shrine, the Federal National Cemetery, because when the cemetery was created, horses and wildlife and mules and donkeys and cattle roamed still freely there. I'd love to see the first cemetery and how fast they got a good fence up to keep those critters from tromping over the gravesites back in that day. But there wasn't much money to spend, and a lot of the laborers were all shot up on both sides, and probably difficult to get things done. But anyway, that, the reason I say it was wetland, the good soils there and the roots of the plants are still there that you'd use to delineate the wetland in that area. But a lot of it was filled up with, filled dirt was brought in. When they dug out the new part of the National Cemetery over there along the north side, you can see it's the cleared area of, let's see, I'm not sure how this map is. Actually, this is not the latest aerial photo, I don't believe, because it does show the new ground and the cleared lots a little better. But maybe it is, and it just looks the same here as it does on a computer screen. But at any rate, part of the water, talking about that triangle, approximately where the back of those buildings are, that little cut-down and then this way thing, that's probably about the line where water to the left of that wet area goes down under Government Avenue into a wooded wetland that you see there. All that wooded area is excellent, wooded wetland, not open prairie. It may have been prairie once upon a time. But anyway, it actually then, the part that will run off of, or does run off of, what's the sale barn property right now from down there, that corner, actually goes under the National Cemetery when it goes south. And that water is piped under the National Cemetery through a huge pipe, much bigger than the one the city has when it gets down Hill Avenue. So, it sort of floods some property down there. And currently, there's still mud overflowing from that work that was done on the cemetery and the clearing of a lot. Anyway, that, all that water that goes that way goes into the town branch at West Fork of the White River at 11th Street. You see the Hill Avenue comes down and goes this way. Well, right as you turn Hill Avenue and 11th Street, or somewhat mixed up there, it was historically Hill Avenue, and when it got over to where it's now Duncan, that was Hill Avenue. And recently, they put a sign back on that part saying it's Hill Avenue, even though it's running east-west like all streets do. But it is the route of 11th Street at that point. Anyway, that's where a pipe brings, a smaller pipe, but a significant-sized pipe brings the water from the National Cemetery and from that part of the sale barn into the town branch there. And as you all have heard from my neighbors in the, over the years, the flooding gets worse and worse downstream from there, all the way to 15th Street, which had to be closed several times this spring and winter, late winter, I guess. Anyhow, the water going east, where it's directly going into the mainstream, the Tanglewood branch, which is also a tributary of the town branch further down after it joins with the Spout Spring branch coming from Mount Sequoia from the northeast, and they come together at next to Walker Park. You can see the confluence up there of the two, and I made photos down there looking upstream where those two come. Even in the winter, it looks like you're somewhere out on the buffalo or some other wild stream, because these two pretty flowing streams coming together, when it's not flooded too deep to be standing out there in the middle. It's really a beautiful spot in town. And it's, but when that water gets together down there, it's really powerful. On the way, on the way...
Mr. Shepherd?
It's picked up water from the center, which comes down this way. So, well, let me get faster to the point. I think that watershed protection has to be a key thing, and anything that's done, it's got to be thought about in the zoning process, and I hope that if something's allowed to be built on this property, it will be much better planned than the plan that was here two years ago, which was going to put a small detention area down there between those two streams. But since they used a lot of field dirt, you can't build as good a natural rain garden as you could have before that work was done. So, I think this is a piece of ground that needs to be considered very important. Just because cows have been the main users of it for some years doesn't mean it's not sacred ground. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shepherd. Don't forget your hat. Aubrey, your hat.
Hello. My name is Leonard Shorty, and I live in the same neighborhood. I'm actually one house south of Kathy Casida's, the first speaker on this. And I guess my input, well, I'm hoping that maybe, although I commend what Aubrey has just said about the possibility, but I'm hoping that an opening can be made to School Street. And then I guess what I would like to commend is some kind of zoning that would provide a barrier between the proposed apartment complex and the neighborhood and the National Cemetery. I think it will have a lot less opposition, somehow some kind of zoning. Zoning can be established that would protect or give some kind of buffer zone between those neighborhoods. And plus, I would agree with Kathy's recommendation that not allow four-story buildings, but, okay, well, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Shorty. Is there any other member of the public here to speak to this item?
Hey, sir. I'm Ron Butler, the current president of the Regional National Cemetery Improvement Corporation. And I guess really the only question I had, is there a definitive type, you know, this community generally covers a whole lot of stuff, you know, types of businesses and so forth? Have we got to the point where there's some pinpointing of what they're going to put in there?
No, sir. This is just a land use discussion right now. We haven't seen a development proposal, or at least we haven't.
And that's pretty well answered my question.
Okay. Easy enough. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll pull it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Deera, for the record, what's the, what is the density on Neighborhood Services?
On Neighborhood Services?
I mean, sorry, Community Services, that's what we're looking at.
That's what we're looking at.
Community Services does not have a maximum density listed.
So, there is actually no maximum? I was surprised by that comment. I was assuming there was some density limit.
No, the zoning district was not designed to have a density maximum. However, there are other issues, including green space, parking, a variety of different things that go along with a development request. So, those things do tend to inadvertently limit density.
Because of building heights and things, effectively, there ends up being a density limit.
That's correct.
But there's not an official density limit.
There's not a density maximum built into the Community Services zoning district.
I'm sorry. I should have been more familiar with that. Thank you. Got a watershed question, too, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if nobody else is jumping up.
The mic is yours.
I can assume that any large-scale also, Deera, that came through, that there would be watershed issues addressed at that point, not now?
If the property is rezoned to Community Services, the development would be eligible for administrative approval of a large site improvement plan, so there would be no large-scale development review by the Planning Commission. Or if there are any variance requests associated with the development, the commission would, at that time, review an administrative item, which...
That we could pull.
At that point, you would be able to review those issues. However, you know, we do have regulations in our Unified Development Code regarding watershed, drainage, all of these, they, any future development request would be expected to meet the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Code unless otherwise varied by the Planning Commission or City Council.
Right. So, they would have to have a detention pond, most likely, and address any issues dealing with water.
I can't speak to any sort of detention pond requirement.
They can't put any more water off their property than is coming off of it currently, correct?
That's correct. They would be treated just like every other development and property owner in the city.
Okay. Thanks.
If I could also add on, our city engineering staff did look at the rezoning, looked at storm drainage and streams. This property would be affected by the streamside protection ordinance in the northeast portion of the site. Tanglewood branch, as Mr. Shepherd pointed out, is located on a portion of the site. So, we'd be reviewing the site in addition to the standard detention and drainage also for the streamside protection issues.
So, they would have that wider berth that they can't build within automatically?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just wanted to clarify that the issue with runoff is the peak flow, not the overall amount of water that can come off of a piece of property. So, you could have a lot more water coming off of a piece of property, but it's the peak flow of water can't be greater than it is in its undeveloped state. So, there is a potential for greater flooding downstream, even though, because you have like a long-term...
Yeah, more hard surface.
Rain situation or something. So, it just would be the amount of water that's coming out per minute wouldn't be any bigger. I think that that's, there's valid concerns surrounding any development of any land in this area where there's flooding issues. So, it's definitely something that if we're uncomfortable with, I wouldn't mind having more time to look at. Yeah, just wanted to get that out there. I was going to pass the mic back to you for now.
All right. I have a question for staff. Ms. Sanders, one of the members of the public mentioned a couple of, kind of, how do I say that, lower intensity districts? Thank you. Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Conservation, could you kind of give us a quick primer on how we ended up at Community Services, maybe, for this site?
Well, that's what the applicant has submitted for review by the staff, the commission, and the City Council. The other two zoning districts that were referenced by a member of the public are Neighborhood Conservation and Neighborhood Services. Neighborhood Conservation is a zoning district that was created and is associated primarily with the downtown master plan area as well as the Walker Park neighborhood. It allows for one and two, one and two family dwellings with three family and some low-intensity non-residential uses by conditional use permit, which would be approved by the Planning Commission. Neighborhood Services is another mixed-use form-based zoning district that allows for, I don't have those regulations in front of me, but I believe it's one, two, three family dwellings and use unit 12, limited business by right and apartments or multifamily, and some other commercial and office uses by conditional use permit. However, that request has not been submitted to planning staff for review. We're simply reviewing what the applicant has proposed. We do find that is consistent with the city's planning policies. It's compatible with the neighborhood, and that's why we're recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners. Commissioner Oskens.
I've got a question for, I see our city engineer in the back. I thought you were going to be able to sit back there all by yourself, didn't you? If you would please, would you please address Commissioner Winston's comments about peak flows or what have you, as far as pre-development conditions, post-development conditions, what can and can't happen? And I know that a lot of times, folks think that with development, more problems are created, when a lot of times, with good development, sometimes problems are actually alleviated. Could you kind of speak to that for us, please?
Certainly, yes. It's pretty simple. Really, the peak flows that come off the site prior to development cannot be increased after the development occurs. So, the peak flow has to remain the same. Typically, that is with detention. There are other methods, but typically for a site of this size, it would be by the use of detention ponds.
Whenever we're designing for development, we also have to consider upstream what's actually coming on to the property as well, which may not be, I mean, it could actually, with good development, it could actually alleviate some of the flooding problems down there. Is that a safe assumption or not?
It could be the case. Every site is different, but yes, absolutely, if upstream flows are causing a problem, there are opportunities to help mitigate those through the development.
Right. Would you say that it's also, safe to say that as far as the zoning goes, that the zoning itself would be, as far as like density or what all you can build or what have you, people have to consider their parking, their turning radiuses, their setbacks, et cetera, et cetera? So, in zoning, site conditions are self-limiting. In other words, we limit density and what have you, building heights, like I said, setbacks, driveways, drive aisles, turning radiuses, et cetera, et cetera. And so, therefore, whenever the applicant comes back in, it's very possible that this zoning would not be any better or any worse than RMF24, commercial or industrial or what have you. Would that be a safe assumption as well?
I would say that's correct, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oskens.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
On another point, I just wanted to reiterate that there is a real difference between this application and the application from a couple of years ago, adding that extra piece of property that does have an outlet onto School Street that wasn't there before. And we were really concerned about how traffic was going to get out onto the major streets, and it really was going to force a lot of that traffic to go through the neighborhood. And so, being that this is a less intense zoning than we're looking at before, and having that extra outlet, and having the streamside protection regulations now, there's a lot of reasons to support this.
Mr. Commissioner? I do want to correct one error. This is actually a more intense development than Downtown General. All of the uses in Downtown General are in Community Services, plus some additional uses, unit 18, which is gasoline service stations, which was not in Downtown General. All of the conditional uses of Downtown General are also found in Community Services, except that there are additional conditional uses allowed, which are liquor store, outdoor music, Clean Technologies, which is the manufacturing and storage of solar panels, batteries, things like that. The density is the same, the Balkan area requirements are identical, setbacks are basically identical, and the height is in four stories with both of them. So, this is actually probably a more intense sort of development. Now, the other things you said were correct. This is, they do include a new strip of land, and so that makes it different. And I think it's been more than a year since the City Council turned down Downtown General. Is that correct?
Two years.
So, since that, they can bring back... So since that, they can bring back, they could bring back the identical request if they wanted to, because it's been more than a year since the City Council turned down the Downtown General request.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Question for staff. Dara, given that you'd be giving administrative approval, I'm assuming that staff would also, I mean, just because this other property is included doesn't mean it would necessarily be used, but I'm assuming staff would take that into consideration in approval of any development plan, correct? Specifically, I'm talking about the piece of property that connects to South School.
Staff would be reviewing any future development requests for compliance with access management, compliance with not only the non-residential design standards, or the urban residential design standards, depending on what type of uses, how the property is developed. So we would be reviewing it for compliance with all of those regulations established in the Unified Development Code.
Okay.
And like I said, if there was any sort of variance request associated with that development, the Commission would be able to see those variance requests at that time.
But staff has some control under access management to determine, let's say they brought this through without a street connection to South School, staff would be able to say, "Yeah, we don't like that, and we're gonna not approve it administratively," correct?
If I could address that?
Sure.
We would just take a look at the project when it came through. It's kind of speculative at this point. If they were proposing two single-family homes, probably wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
They, just depends on the nature of the development, depending on the types of improvements and access that would be needed. If they developed a full site with, you know, a mixed-use type project, we'd likely require a full-blown traffic study, and as mentioned in the zoning report, may look at things like, you know, street widenings, traffic signals, things like that, that could potentially be required, depending on the proportionality of the development and the impacts to the surrounding infrastructure.
Okay. I guess my point is, maybe in order to assuage fear on the part of the public, that staff will have retained control over development in the future, and will be able to make requirements about how that development continues, correct? Including things like access to South School. I know I'm speculating-
There's limits to what the staff can do, obviously. They can look at, if a proposal for a large-scale development comes through, and they believe that it would sow increased traffic safety problems without certain things to be done, then the staff can possibly require that. But when a land is zoned properly, then basically, it can be developed under that zone for all the uses allowed under that zone, and to the density that's allowed under that zone, which is four-story buildings with no actual density on number of units. So this is a fairly, just like the Downtown General, this is a fairly intense development allowance. Now, it doesn't mean that if they do put four-story buildings throughout this site, that staff won't say that in order to do this, they have to have some other exit on to South School or something like that. And so a lot of it is, as Andrew said, based upon the actual development themselves, but we should not let the citizens think that staff is in control on development. They are not. They have to look at what is being proposed and how it can be feasibly done. The primary discretion that the City Council will have when they make this determination is at the zoning stage and not at the development stage.
Okay. But so you're saying that staff, if they wanted to cover the site, let's pretend they want to cover the site in four-story apartment complexes, and not make the connection to South School, are you saying staff would have no ability to stop them, or they would?
You would have to look at the traffic studies on that to see if whether or not that would be actually the recommended connection that would-
Let's pretend the traffic studies suggest that a connection needs to be made.
We have, in fact, attempted to do that in the past, over one particular development that had been zoned properly and that they wanted to build, but in fact, it was denied both by the Planning Commission because of neighborhood opposition, and by the City Council. And we were sued, and I had to tell the individuals, the citizens then, that we probably only stood about a 50-50 chance of being successful, because it had been zoned properly. And traffic engineers can always, they will probably find a traffic engineer to create a good study enough to show that it can be done. And so then it would be our evidence against their evidence. So I'm not saying that we cannot require that kind of stuff, or attempt to require that in development. We should. If there is a very intense development, there's not enough infrastructure for it. You know, it should be denied, and that's something that has happened in the past. But I just don't want to let the citizens think that we, the staff maintains this control, and don't worry, they will make sure everything's okay, because their authority is somewhat limited. We have to establish that it really is a dangerous traffic situation that this development is causing, before we really can do anything to prevent development. That is something we might feel is too intense.
Mr. Chair. Can I expand on that?
Ms. Sanders, please do.
The city attorney is exactly right. Staff does not have control over the way that any future development would occur on the property. Staff is simply charged with administering the current regulations as adopted by the City Council. So when staff was proposing some of these new zoning districts, like the Community Services, staff wanted to offer administrative approval as an incentive for using a zoning district that is more consistent with the goals and policies of City Plan 2025. So with that in mind, the non-residential design standards were associated with the Community Services zoning district. These require much higher level detail in building design and site design. Those regulations were presented to the Council of Neighborhoods in order to, for some of the neighborhood representatives, to better understand what planning staff was proposing here. So when a property owner or developer was proposing to rezone a property to the Community Services zoning district, sure, they get an incentive of administrative development approval. However, they're held to higher standards than majority of the other properties within an established zoning district inside of the city limits. So I hope that sort of helps you to understand the fact that staff does just administer the regulations within the Unified Development Code. Any discretion has to, is really in the hands of the Planning Commission and the City Council.
I understand that. And I'm assuming that we, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm still, we've gone around a little bit, I don't know if I'm still, I don't want to speak, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I understand that, and I understand the point of administrative approval, and I understand that we could also pull this item, although I'm just, I guess, I, in general, I think that this is a good zoning for this property. My assumption was that, once the property began to be developed, even though there's not a large scale, there would, I understand that there were two houses being put on, as Mr. Garner said, that of course we wouldn't require a connection to School Street. Now I'm hearing from the city attorney that potentially, we can't require a connection to School Street. I'm a little confused about that, so.
Well, as Mr. Garner said, if they had two houses there, we surely could not require a connection to School Street. But let's, you know, they bought the land for something. I don't think they bought the land not to use it. So I would assume that they, that is their plan. Even though we can't, we require that now, that's not something we can immediately assume, but I think in the future, that's something that they can look at, just to see the whole lay of the land, and see whether or not, because of the possible density that goes on this property, is that something that tips the balance for you, to see, you know, that at least they do have access to another street.
Okay. Mr. Chair. I'll shut up now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Chesser. Commissioner Hoskins.
Staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the project comes back through, and staff feels like there is the need for another connection, or capable, able-bodied staff feels like there's a need for another connection, if the applicant doesn't feel like that connection is appropriate, or doesn't want to pay for that connection, or what have you, basically, administrative approval is off anyway, it comes right back to the Commission, does it not?
There is an appeals section. The decision of the zoning development administrator could be appealed, and if there's a situation where we feel like it would, you know, the criteria would be if it would create or exacerbate a dangerous traffic situation, and we felt like you needed that additional connection to avoid that, and the applicant disagreed, they could appeal that decision to the Commission. The full development wouldn't be appealed, it would just probably be that particular decision.
Is the administrative approval, it's kind of one of those things, as a developer or whatever, be careful of what you ask for, because you might get it, kind of thing. Administrative approval is something from the development community, we've been wanting forever. As a planning commissioner, I'm sitting here, kind of scratching my head a little bit, but I'll get through it. But anyhow, I forgot what my next question was now. Never mind, I'm done. I'm done.
That's an easy one.
Yeah, you convinced me.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have one final question.
I don't know, what do you guys say? You want to hear it?
Mr. Chair, I'd love to hear it from Mr. Lightman.
All right, come right up to the mic.
I'll keep it real brief, and I know you have to stay within the merits of the rezoning, and when you start talking about traffic flow and access and all that sort of thing, we start venturing on. However, you know, the thing we really wanted to address from two years ago, and one of the reasons why I frankly think that it didn't get passed in council, was traffic. So it's sort of the elephant in the room, and so it's difficult to talk about without not talking about it. However, that one-acre parcel, if I can just say so, was absolutely key to this. And it's key for the buyer, it was key for us to be able to, to be able to enter into the arrangement, which has me here right now. And for whatever that is worth, the intention of future development is to have that be the main thoroughfare. Now, I completely understand, and I do think that you have to rightfully say, you know, "Hey, you know, anything can happen," and that's certainly the case with any rezoning, and that's why you have to take in the whole, you know, all aspects of it at this time, because this is your chance to do so. But I did want to just simply add that point. It's just hard, because when you have a legitimate rezoning issue, like, you know, what's the traffic impact gonna be, is, how do you address that and still keep that within the merits of the rezoning? I mean, it becomes a mind exercise. And, you know, the only way that we knew how to do that was, you know, the east half of that one-acre lot is Downtown General zoning. The back half is industrial. You know, the far western half is RMF. You know, we could have taken the middle part that's industrial and said, "We want to rezone that," but it's a whole project concept, that's what we're trying to convey in the best way we know how, so.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lightman.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I think that, first of all, even given the concerns of the neighbors, given what could be built by right on industrial, Community Services is definitely an improvement. Given that part of it's already RMF 24, there's a whole mix of uses here, I feel like if you average them out, you pretty much get Community Services, which I suspect is kind of what staff thought, minus the industrial uses. I will take on faith that somehow or another, there won't be a major traffic issue, and that the reason for the purchase of the parcel that connects to School is to alleviate such issues. And with that, if nobody else has comments, I'm gonna move that we approve Rizzo 11-3857, with staff recommendation.
Second. You mean forward, right?
Forward, I'm sorry, forward, with the recommendation for approval. I apologize.
We have a motion to forward with the recommendation of approval by Commissioner Chesser, and a second by Commissioner Honchel. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
There's, well, my thinking on this earlier tonight was that this was a less intense zoning than we looked at a couple of years ago. And so I didn't really do my diligence of comparing the two, and pulling out my book and seeing which one had this use and the other use. And so I'm not really comfortable tonight voting for it. And so if you're comfortable with the chances that it might not pass without my vote, then I think we should carry on. But I think, even if it did pass at this point, City Council has an opportunity to maybe do something more creative than we're doing, where maybe they, one parcel is Community Services and one parcel is Downtown General, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to state that before we vote.
Well, and I guess that's a good point. For this rezone, for the rezoning to move forward, you need five, you'll need five positive votes? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And we've got seven here? And one who thinks he might not. So the option, even though we have a motion and a second, tabling is also an option to get the full panel here. I'll give you a couple of seconds to think about that, and while I respond to Commissioner Winston, I feel like, even though this is technically more intense than a Downtown General, I feel like, as Commissioner Hoskins stated earlier, a lot of times with zoning, rezoning requests, the conditions are self-limiting in and of themselves. And as in industrial zoning, it is much less palatable than what could be there with Community Services. And if, as a Commission, what we want to promote is highest and best use of a piece of property, this simply has to be more intense than what it is, or what the rest of the neighborhood is, given its proximity to Martin Luther King and South School. And so that's that, I guess. Those are my comments. And we do have a motion and a second. I'll give an opportunity for any additional comments.
I just, just to bounce back on that, I would-
Actually, no, I'm kidding.
Oh, okay. I'm not saying that if we tabled it in two weeks, I would be voting against this. I'm saying that tonight, I can't vote for it, but I need, I need my time to take a look at this, if I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay. Thank you. Understood. If I can hit Commissioner Honchel real quick.
I was, the only comment that I had is that, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bartholomew being so patient with the process. And in that vein, I'd like to take the opportunity, you know, you look at what staff has done this time around, you know, they've come back with a better proposal, in my opinion. The words "consistent, appropriate" resonate throughout the report. The traffic issues overall, it's the staff's opinion that the adequate improvements to adjacent internal streets and proposed zoning of the 12 acres will not appreciably increase traffic danger and congestion. I go off of, you know, what the applicant is proposing and what staff is supporting. The stream side ordinance is in place. I mean, overall, you know, I think Mr. Bartholomew has been more than patient and more than willing to do whatever it takes to get something going over here, instead of just a big old crummy-looking sail barn. So, you know, I mean, if we sit here and just beat this thing up, I mean, we've already got, you know, this skyscrapers going up, and the string getting dug down to the core of the earth, you know, before this thing even gets going, and we're just trying to get an appropriate zoning going, so we can get a project on this parcel. I just, you know, I think we're just gonna beat this thing up, and I think we need to give them a chance to come through with something that the city can support and get behind. You know, this is one of those things that I really say probably to myself more often than not, you know, it's a learning opportunity. He was more willing to get the neighborhood involved last time. I don't personally know much, Mr. Bartholomew, but I would assume that he would be more than willing to work with the community to do whatever it takes to get something going over here. And I really think that's a great thing, especially in this economy right now. That's my comments. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Honchel.
Mr. Chair.
Almost it. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hoskins.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Just a brief comment. If I wasn't unclear earlier, I'm going to support the project, so that's one of the five you have at this lonely end of the table. And.
You can scoot over.
And contrary to Commissioner Honchel's comments, I think it's a lovely sail barn. Then I'm done.
Duly noted. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chesser.
I don't know which way we're going with this. I'm afraid, I'm ignorant of Robert's rules on this point. What happens if, could I withdraw my motion if we wanted to table?
We can. I was going to wait for the applicant to, I was going to give them a chance to respond to that gesture, and then I was going to, if they want it tabled, I was going to request that you withdraw, or maybe revise to a table.
Okay.
And he wouldn't even have to do that, somebody could move to table his motion, and so the whole thing would be, and they should also know that even if somehow it got four votes, the majority and not five, you could still appeal to the city council, it wouldn't delay it, for what that's worth.
Okay.
So, how does all that sound?
Sure, come on up. So, do you understand what we're talking about? We can, we can go ahead, there, there's a motion to, to forward with approval, that we can go ahead and proceed on, but you need five positive votes. We have one member who has stated he's not going to vote. We've got one who has spoken up in favor. We can proceed with the vote. If it fails, you have to appeal to city council. If we table, you come back in two weeks when you've got a full commission.
I, I understand, and it's, I hate to be the one here making the decision, but I, I think I will, and, and it's because of this. You know, we, Billy Joe's been trying to work through this for now years, and the, the prospect of, of continued delay, even though actually, it's been, it's been very good this time around, especially with staff, working, working through to this point, but I, I don't think I could, I could tell him at this point, you know, we need to delay this vote. I think he probably wouldn't be too happy with me, and I understand that, that the vote may not go, go the way, or may. I do think, you know, there, there clearly will be debate about this at city council, and, and, you know, we certainly look forward to that, but, but just so I'm clear, kid, if I could just make sure, because I'm, I don't know if I'm familiar with the appeal ordinances of, of, of Fable, but if it, if it doesn't receive the requisite quorum vote here, then we file an appeal to, and it would still be on the same agenda track.
Either way, yeah, either way, it's going to the city council. You would need to appeal quickly in writing to the city clerk. It's very small, just say you want your zoning, you don't want the zoning that was denied, or you're appealing their denial. And, and so, it, it really shouldn't delay anything one way or the other, even if you don't get five votes.
Okay. Well, and I, I really do appreciate the consideration here tonight. I think I would like for it to go to a vote, if that's possible.
Will do. Thank you, sir. Are there any further comments?
Can I dive in, since we're going to vote? I'll just make a quick comment.
At the 11th hour, Commissioner Cook.
Of course.
Please.
He always waits in the last, make it. Exactly.
Ouch. I tend to agree with your comments, Commissioner Cave, actually, because I look at this as a, as a whole, looking at, of the city, and it's what I think is best zoning for that piece of property, and the additional piece of property they've added, certainly in proximity of the intersection, which you mentioned also, Martin Luther King and School Street. And the way I see that developing going forward, you know, I, we look at this as only as a zoning, as a piece of property, certainly city council looks at it totally differently, but from what I remember in the past discussions, you guys have definitely tried to address some of the concerns that were mentioned before, with that additional piece on School Street. So, from my perspective, I support this rezoning.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Additional comments? Mr. Garner, will you call the roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Winston?
No.
Cave?
Yes.
Munch?
Yes.
Munch and Carrie's.
That concludes our agenda this evening. Are there any announcements?
We are adjourned.
Mr. Shepherd?
Well, you're adjourned, but I was, I came up here to say, since you had the applicant back up, that the neighborhood really didn't know about this. Most people in the neighborhood don't know about it yet, and we haven't even begun to talk about getting a meeting together with the neighborhood, with the developers. This occurred in the past, and it, I don't know how many people in the neighborhood have been notified, there was one sign down on the street until last Monday, when they put up, when you made your tour, and they put up signs on another spot or two. But people, it was on College, it was on School Avenue, and, and most people didn't know, had anything to do with the sail barn.
Well, we have a notification requirement that they're supposed to meet, and, and that's part of the process to get a free process.